Sixty-seven hundred dollars.
Hi.
I think I just put this in the pile.
The new one.
I gathered everything up.
I give my debt.
I just stole the pennies.
Okay, I got it.
I'll give them.
I'll give them.
Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. We all please stand and say the pledge of allegiance for those.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I'll ask the clerk to please take roll call.
Uh, Smithers?
Here.
Lyons?
Here.
Tran? Case? McEwen?
Here.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved, Smithers?
Second?
Second, Lyons.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
McEwen?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Good, thank you. And at this time, I allow visitors to address the council. Visitors may address council at this time, however, comments are limited to three minutes as per the Iowa code meeting law. Are there any one others who would like to come forward and speak to council? We have a back row back there, so come on in. Just you? Yeah, please.
I might too, after.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, you each have three minutes. Yeah, we just ask you to state your name and...
Okay. Uh, my name is Brielle Pryor. We live at four oh, four oh six North Grove Street. And we're here tonight as residents of the city and victims of a crime that deeply affected our lives and our neighborhood. A little over a month ago, a devastating situation occurred that took the lives of our trans and neighbors, almost took the lives of our family, and caused a fire that was set intentionally. Our safety, peace of mind, and overall well-being were shaken that night, not just by the crime itself, but by the lingering presence of the severely damaged property right across the street from us. The home as it stands now is a constant painful reminder of what we went through. It is burned, broken, unstable, and it smells awful. The odor is overwhelming, especially in the heat, and it seeps into our windows. Every time we step outside or drive past it, we are reminded that, we are reminded of that terrifying day. It's not just a burn structure, it's a trauma site. We're respectfully asking for a clear update on the status of this property. What steps has the city made to begin the process of demolition? Is there a timeline in place? And if not, what needs to happen to move this forward? Little updates here and there are not enough. We understand these things can take time, but we also believe that the residents who live nearby deserve communication and action, especially when the property poses an ongoing risk to public health and safety. We need a commitment from this council that this issue will not be put on the back burner. We expect movement, we expect communication, and we expect accountability.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, next.
I, I also live at four oh six North Grove Street, Harrison Pryor.
Okay.
I kinda wanna talk about the exact same thing, just in a different way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as I said, it's quite a grim reminder of everything that happened, you know, just over a month ago. You know, for example, I get questions almost daily from my kids, the four-year-old and three-year-old specifically. Uh, just today, my son picked up a Nerf gun and asked me if I could shoot Scooby, which is Dennis, who used to live at the house, because he thought that might bring back Brandon and Stevie. So every day when he looks at that house, or when my four-year-old Eliza looks at that house, they ask questions that are very difficult to answer. And we would, we'd really like for the house to be gone, not only for, you know, peace of mind, for, for safety, it projects a better image, getting rid of such a visual reminder of what happened, but also just so we don't have to relive it constantly, you know, answering questions with four-year-olds and three-year-olds, ask him, hey, why, why'd he kill people? Why, you know, I shot him, should've shot him more, apparently, Dennis, that is. But, um, you know, it's just, it's a difficult thing dealing with every day, trying to navigate a jungle of how do I tell my kids about this situation? And every time they see the house, it's a new question for me.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
So yeah, I mean, for me, I live at four oh nine North Grove.
What's your name, please?
Luke Barrett.
I'm sorry?
Luke Barrett.
Luke Barrett, thank you, Luke.
So yeah, I live at the address where the events took occurrence. Say, I mean, for me, it's, I mean, every day I let my dogs out, I look out the back door, I see the house. I mean, it's a constant reminder of my two best friends we lost in that tragedy, a constant reminder of the, I mean, terrible man that lived next door to all of us. So I get, I walk out in front of my house in the morning, walk to my work truck, and I have to look at the house then, coming home from work, I look at it right then again. I mean, just a constant reminder of something that should've never happened. Sad that it did, but, you know, here we are now, I'd like to see something done, that house being demolished, and sometime soon, that is possible.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, guys. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, uh, committee reports. Ron, you're up.
What's that?
You're up, it's your turn. Well, actually, it's not really committee reason.
No.
We don't, we didn't have a committee. Hang on, Ron. Now, you can set that down. I just realized, we didn't do a committee, we forgot to take that off, I apologize. So Eagle Engineering, Jake, come on up. He probably wants to go home.
That would be wonderful.
Yes.
Uh, alright, so we have a couple of projects here, um, the two on the list tonight are the two street projects, um, we're at the point of kinda wrapping these up.
Yay.
So the first one I'll go through is the asphalt project, um, that was with Omni Engineering. So the first one there is we have a change order, um, of an add of about ninety-eight hundred dollars, this included some additional curb and gutter that we did, adjustment of final quantities, we had a couple smaller areas we added of asphalt, so, um, I think we got a pretty good bang for our buck that came in, I think it's held up really well, I drove it again tonight, it looks good, um, if there's any other comments or stuff that comes up, please let me know, but no one's reached out to me kinda since we finished up, so, I'm obviously real estate, to me, to Jamie, whoever, if there's something that comes up that we need to get down and look at or fix, or, um, but right now, moving forward with, uh, we do recommend approval of change order number one, in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-four cents, which results in a final contract price of three sixty-seven, oh sixty-four, seventy-three.
Three sixty-seven?
Oh six-four, seventy-three.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I'll ask for a motion for change order number one with Omni.
So moved, McEwen?
Second?
Smithers?
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEwen?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, the next one is application payment number two. Um, we did application payment number one about a month ago, that involved, I would say ninety-five percent of everything on there. And the application number two brings everything up to final quantities less the retainage that we had to hold. Um, so we do, we reviewed that, where we've signed up on quantities that contractors give with those, um, so the application is for fourteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents, and we do recommend approval and payment of, application for payment number two in that amount.
Okay, let's go.
So moved, Smithers?
You? Second?
Lyons.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Smithers?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, and the application for number, and for number three for Omni is for the retainage, we'll typically approve that, we have to hold it for thirty days per the Iowa code. That also allows us time to collect the closeout documents, um, instead of surety, affidavit of debts and claims, all those documents that we hold on to as warranty items for the city. And if Omni were to go under, we have those bonds to go back on to fix something that we're gonna come up, so, we'll approve it and we'll hold it until we get those documents and until we expel that thirty days or so.
And what was the amount on that?
The application payment for three is the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. We do recommend approval and payment of that application.
Okay, and, uh, motion to approve application payment number three with a hold of thirty days for closeout.
So moved, Lyons?
Second?
McEwen?
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Smithers?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, the next one is the Sharp Street paving project, that was the paving there from the school coming down the hill. Um, they have completed all the work, I went and drove it again tonight, they got it sealed on Tuesday after Labor Day, I believe, because it rained on Labor Day. Um, it looks good, they still need to pull the plastic off of the handicap ramps, I noticed tonight, so I'll have Nick reach out to, waiting with Lakeview, have them come down and do that. Um, other than that, it looks pretty good, we'll wait and see if the seating comes up, if it doesn't come up, we'll have them redo that, um, that's more of a warranty item, that's something we'll hold back every day, so. But we do have a change order for this one, it's actually an de-duct, um, we do not do, have to do as much survey testing because of that extra surveys we found underneath the pavement, so that saves us a little bit of money there. Um, so we have a de-duct in the amount of three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars for a total contract price of one hundred and twenty-seven dollar, thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Great.
We do recommend approval of the change order number one for Lakeview construction.
Looking for a motion, please?
So moved, Smithers?
Second?
McEwen?
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Lyons?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have application for payment number two from Lakeview, same thing as the last project, this will bring us up to ninety-five percent. Um, this includes all the changes that we talked about with change order one, that amount is five thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. Um, we do recommend approval and payment of that amount to Lakeview construction.
Can you repeat the amount?
Thank you. I don't know how I have to say it wrong, I know I do.
Five, five, three, one, thank you, point eighty-five.
Oh my God, I wrote right, I just heard it. Okay, thank you.
So moved, McEwen?
Yeah, I guess I need a motion first. Thank you.
Second?
Smithers?
Okay, roll call, please.
Smithers?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then the final one is application payment number three from Lakeview Construction, that is for the retainage. As we talked about before, we'll approve this, we'll hold it for thirty days, um, I had two of the three closeout documents, so I'm just switching the last one, so I just make it that year this week, so, we do recommend the payment at the amount of six thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy cents.
Got it. Okay, motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
McEwen?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
McEwen?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else for me while I'm here?
Dude, was Omni the one that was fixing the manholes, the dummy?
That was Omni's sub.
Oh, okay.
So we had their con, their concrete contractor do that, so I'm actually still waiting for a bill for that.
Okay.
Won't cost the city anything, it's changing for documentation, so.
Okay.
Yeah, awesome.
Mitch, you have any questions for him? Okay, you can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, moving on then to, uh, motion to approve a special events application, twenty-four, two eighty, for the homecoming after parade party at Jim Hughes Road State Parking Lot. Y'all had a chance to look that over, it's pretty much the same as last year, the year before, the year before. So wait till there, is there not any question we can ask for a motion approval?
So moved, Smithers?
Second?
Lyons?
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
McEwen?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, uh, motion to approve an amended application for the YMCA. Now, last time, council approved their application, but when Mitch and I attended the board meeting, they did mention, last time, were any of you here for the, were any...
Supercar?
At their, no, at the parade last time?
Square Road.
The Square Road, yeah.
High Road.
Well, we had some issues with some vehicles kinda getting irritated with all the pedestrians and their kinds, we, it was, there was a couple of close calls, so they did, one of the board members mentioned that we had talked about maybe this year closing the streets.
Oh, yeah.
And so they wanted, and I did talk to Eric, and he said, as long as we let all the businesses know, just because Sharp Street was left open, we had grocery stores still open, so that's the amendment, but then I talked to Diana, and she knows they would have to reach out to all the businesses so they're all aware, but it would just be for those, it would be probably a total of three hours that we would have it shut down because they're setting up, so if you don't have an issue with that, and if you wanna...
My only concern is handicap needs.
Mm-hmm.
If you've got somebody on the square that can't, that needs to get there and can't.
Can't, yeah.
That would be a concern for me.
And they're shutting down all the streets around the square, so that there's no cars driving around?
See, I kinda remember how we did it last year, did we just close the top three, but...
That's what I thought.
Normally, we close the top.
Like all that mine in Sharp?
Yeah. If I'm, am I remembering it right, Matt? Do you know?
It seems like we always left Sharp Street.
Last year, also, we did, was blocked off the inside parking spots, so the kids had more room to walk.
Yeah.
But left the streets open?
Yeah.
So we didn't close all the streets, we just blocked the...
Parking stalls off.
People must just stay away, 'cause I shouldn't...
Oh, yes.
I don't remember any cars.
I, I remember walking down the street, 'cause I was helping them, and that's why I thought they were closed, but honestly, now I don't, so we didn't...
I think it was just the outside parking stalls, we blocked all them off, so they had more room to walk.
Okay.
Could you just block off, like, one direction and leave one direction open to...
Make it a one-way?
It's an option. Totally up to you guys, Eric.
I, I mean, not that I need to know exactly what you're gonna do, just, I mean, just for safety purposes, if that makes sense.
If we just work with Eric and get it figured out, or then maybe with Jamie, and figure out a safe route, so we can have handicap, maybe not close it a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I just remember, right, pick up, the guy was, you know, people were walking in the street, and so he's honking at them, and then he sped off, and it could've been a tragic moment if he, there's somebody ran out in front of him, and I had forgotten about it until she bothered up at that meeting, that we might wanna, we talked about, we should probably close Sharp Street.
Will, will Diana just work with Jamie and...
She'll do whatever, she's okay either way.
Yeah, I think we gotta make sure there's some, okay, especially if you've got somebody that needs something, and, okay. So I will just, instead of a, well, we can make a motion to approve working with Jamie, Eric, and Diana on a safety plan. Shall we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the motion then, for safety plan.
So moved, McEwen?
And a second?
Lyons.
And any further comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Smithers?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Okay, so when Eric gets back, Jamie will, you guys can talk and figure out a plan and get ahold of Diana, we got a little time, so. Okay, um... Now, motion to approve a city contribution for a cone sidewalk permit number two-four-two-eight-two, where we do a max of the five hundred dollars, so half of that, if they repair our sidewalk, and look like Joey did a wrong sidewalk that he always wanted her to do. He never got it done, is what she told me. So she must've filled out paperwork and...
Yeah.
Because the permit was approved, she paid for the work, I think it was about fifty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
This city will, has a reimbursement, two fifty, everything filed up.
Up to the five hundred, yeah, yeah, okay.
Up to two fifty.
Yeah, so this is for two hundred and fifty?
Up to, two fifty is the max.
Two fifty's the max?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Jamie, do you, do you inspect those, are we dreaming that up?
Yeah.
He did.
And you already did, that's part of the paperwork?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so I think we're motion for the reimbursement.
So moved.
Second?
Smithers?
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEwen?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, departmental reports, I know the library's vacant, but there is a library director update. Mitch, are you gonna speak of that, or...
Yes, that's her name.
Was it Autumn?
Autumn, yeah, Autumn. Autumn Yostin, they hired Autumn Yostin. Yeah.
She was...
We think she had been at the elementary school.
She was.
Of course, uh, yeah, the library board, uh, hired her, and she was working with, uh, Teresa to get her new hire paperwork filled out, and I thought her first.
I think it's Autumn.
Yeah, Autumn, yes, Autumn Yostin.
Yostin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, she's currently a librarian at West?
Middle School, isn't it? Or is it West? One of those schools.
One of those schools.
One of those schools.
Okay.
Library board filled out.
So that's all that, okay, very good. And Mike's not here tonight. Ron, now it's your turn.
I don't have a whole lot, um, I would like to tell you that the drinking fountain that Angie got for a grant is now installed, yep.
Rock pictures. Nice.
And it is working, um...
Yes, I went down and checked it out.
We ended up, as you can see in that picture, putting a lot more concrete in than originally it was planned, but it worked out better that way. Um, also, Steven from the museum talked to me, they're having a wedding this Saturday. The area that he wanted to set up, or that the people wanted to set up, um, he's afraid that it's gonna be a little too steep for the chairs they're gonna have to put in, you know, to have people, so he asked me if he could put it down in the park, as long as nothing else is going on, which I checked, there's nothing, um, that he could have it down in the park as long as it was in the back, you know, so he was good with that. Uh, update, um, Doug's still out on medical, um, so I'm down a part-time guy, and then Nathan is back subbing, so I'm only getting him about twenty hours, uh, for every two weeks. Um, we're keeping up, but it's, it's a struggle, um...
Is there anybody else to call back?
Uh, the, last week, the grass has started to slow down, um, temperature's supposed to come back up, and we just got rain, so who knows what's gonna happen, I mean, so we are, uh, like I said, we're keeping up, it's just, uh, it's a struggle. Other than that, I really don't have anything.
I have a question about the museum wedding.
Yep.
I assume they're paying the museum to hold the wedding?
Uh, they're paying the museum, I'm assuming for the museum, um, we have weddings out the park all the time.
Yeah.
But we never charge anything.
Yeah, I know, we don't, but if the, if the museum's being paid and they're using our, using the park to do it, so that doesn't seem right.
He just talked to me about this yesterday, I think it was...
Did he say how many people?
Uh, I think he said forty.
Oh, it's a small...
It's a small wedding.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with using the park, but if they're paying the museum money...
And I don't know if that's gonna happen for sure, he just thought if the chairs weren't gonna set right, 'cause he was gonna have it up on our, kind of our heli ground, or their heli ground, but, so, he just asked if it didn't work out, if he could put it down there, and I said yes, so...
Is, is he gonna put it down where the game is, that the boy scout foot is?
In, in back of that.
In back of that?
Yeah, between that and the, uh, pant theater, you know? Am I, we're actually getting along, so that...
Good. I'm glad that's still in the mail. Very good. Is Doug gonna come back at all this year?
He is, um, he's got a, a doctor's appointment on the seventeenth, he says he's just got a little bit of a gas bubble in his eyes still, and until that gas bubble's gone, he can't.
Right, I knew that, I just wasn't sure if he was done.
And I told him, I was like, you're not coming back until you have that doctor's release, so...
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
He keeps wanting to come back, I said, he can't, the doctor has to give you a release, so...
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, alright, any other questions for Ron?
What?
Nope. Is the lake at good levels, or...
It is, um, I've got it as high as it can go, if I put it up any higher than, it's hard to sit a road in the banks, so...
Oh, the dock, I know you, is that something you have to get somebody to help you with?
No, I, uh...
But I understood that there might, you might need that.
We, uh, we kinda build a wooden, like, ramp out to it, but it's gonna be too heavy and that dock floats, so I don't want the back end of it to set back because of the weight.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, what we're gonna do is I'm just gonna build, kinda like a land ramp, I'm gonna use gravel and build out to it, and then just have a small piece of wood that transfers from the gravel up on the dock.
So you can do that then, so you don't have to contract it out?
Correct.
Okay. Did I say you need to get bids, if you need to help you get it now?
As soon as, as soon as wood slows down a little bit, we'll get to it.
Okay.
Correct.
Alright.
Thanks.
Now, I'm sorry, you're gonna hate me, 'cause I'm just...
One more thing. Well, now they say that, now that you say that, then I go, do we need, are there ADA laws that are gonna be applicable to accessing that and just gravel and...
I'm telling you right now, that is not ADA, uh, accessible, uh, yeah. They, it floats, it tips, it's, it, it would not be...
You have to post a sign.
But that's what I'm wondering, do we, are there any boxes then that we need to check before we're...
Right now, they can't get to it, so we, it's not been a problem, but, I mean, kids To it, so we, it's not been a problem, but, I mean, kids get out to it, because they build like a little rock path to it, but um, yeah, we're gonna put something up to it.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just, what I don't wanna do is have you put in all this work only for something to happen, or somebody complains, somebody says something, and now we're ripping out everything that you.
And we, I talked, one of the ladies that's on my board has a child that's handicapped, and so, um, I talked to her about it, and you know, I was even talking to her about it before we ever, and she said, there's you know, there's lots of stuff that's not available for them, and it's not that big of a deal, as long as we have one that they can, and we do have one that.
On the other end, they can get on that one, so, okay, I was gonna say, otherwise, if we're required to, we're gonna make sure.
That's why I just wanted to make sure.
But we have one that is available for them too.
Okay, so the sign, we're gonna, it'll say?
We'll have to put a sign right.
That, and then direct them to the other end that they wanna use, okay.
Yep.
All right.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you. Oh, one more thing. Okay, Jamie?
Uh, Mike came in the office last week and he had somebody approach him about buying.
Mike who?
Me.
Oh, you, Mike? Okay.
About buying, uh, bricks that we have that are out of the streets that we replaced.
That you have a stockpile of?
Yes.
Were you guys able to find any documentation on that?
No. Are you supposed to keep them?
Well, we've always kept them for replacement, but.
You need to keep some?
We have.
Oh, for a price form.
We did have a price, 'cause, uh.
Brick flooring was on.
There's something in the minutes, I'll have to, I can.
It would obviously be, well, it'd be easy if you just approved a new price.
Yeah.
For some reason, I never got an old one, I thought it was like a dollar a brick.
That's what I was gonna say, a dollar.
I have seen people on the phone that were a dollar a brick, fifty cents a brick, seventy-five cents a brick, it's.
Definitely will be a dollar or up, because I don't want a big change.
Yeah, yeah.
How many do you think we have? We have like five million?
It's a nice little pile.
You can have.
Asking for a friend?
No.
Okay. Do we have to do a new? I mean, 'cause.
Well, if that's not on here, right, so we're gonna have to.
We can do it next, I know.
We'll do a resolution.
I think people can wait for the bricks.
Yeah.
We didn't wanna write a, a resolution and guess at what price that you guys wanted. So we thought, just wanted to discuss it.
Yeah, there won't be a motion tonight, just next time come back.
But we wanted to get the actual price that you guys wanted to set it at, um.
How many do you think there are, though, really, on the?
No clue, there's probably six, ten of them, actually, no clue down there.
Oh, my, man.
I thought you were like, there were about six, I was like, oh, okay.
I think we would have to get, so, like, people have to they're gonna have to load the bricks themselves.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Oh, yes.
They have to come buy the, uh, purchase up at City Hall first, and then go down and show.
Kind of honor system.
Right, and if you hurt your back while moving them, we are not fault.
I know what you're. I mean, literally.
Yeah.
It's all the bricks that come off that block, south of the fire.
Right, I was wondering if that was, yeah, that we paid.
I mean, we could probably keep a dumpster load or half a load, just so we have them. Four repairs, maybe we don't need.
We don't need six?
What's there?
We don't need that many, ten.
No, no, no. Okay, so I guess my thing, I'm asking Mitch, and maybe I'm just not understanding, won't we have to vote on the price, we did last time? So even though we can say, hey, we think it should be a dollar, aren't we gonna have to?
Yeah, we'll come back with a resolution.
Oh, with the price in it?
We don't have a resolution this time, because we didn't know what price you would, all it was.
I think that's where I'm getting, 'cause I think we have to vote on.
So do you wanna give me a, a motion of price then?
I'm good with a dollar.
I'm fine with that.
How much do bricks go for these days?
Well, I, I, I've seen people, I've seen other cities selling the bricks for a dollar, seventy-five, seventy-five cents.
Some are due fifty cents and a dollar.
If the mayor signs them, they'll, too.
Do you have a stamp?
I'm not.
Put Angie out there.
Yeah.
Dollar.
I don't care.
Three quarter.
A dollar.
A dollar.
Dollars.
Okay, so recommending you do the dollar for it, do we wanna motion on that then, or just come down to a resolution?
Because it's not on the agenda.
Well, it is, it's selling, oh.
That's why I like.
We're just gonna directly bring back a resolution for a dollar of brick.
There you go, we don't need to.
Yeah.
Okay, Eric is at his conference, so uh, Matt, you've been busy, bring us up.
All right, yeah, that's, that's very busy, uh, one of the, uh, yesterday with the house fire, I responded to, they had reconstruction workers from Micro Construction that may entry into the house before we arrived, and really we get four people out, you guys.
I saw that, that's amazing.
Um, they're heroes, uh, fire department will be issuing them life-saving awards later date. Um, but, uh.
Were they next door, working on their?
They were actually dropping off the truck, a blue truck and trailer, and coming back around the corner, and he just happened to look over, and he saw the fire in the
Oh, my god.
corner of the, uh, front porch area. And he said that he knew he saw kids there earlier today, when they were by earlier, so he jumped out of the truck, went in, and as soon as he reached the front door, was able to grab um, the little girl and her mother, and then the grandmother was sitting in a recliner. And as they were ushering them out, they felt basically an ex, what they described as an explosion. And, um, the whole inside interior was on fire, and they got out the back door and maneuvered around, and she told him that the, uh, son was still upstairs, and he wasn't able to get back into the back door. And they had a trampoline out there, so they pushed it up there, got him out through the upper story window.
My girls were about to trample.
Um, they were overhoused like that, they're made, they're blue frame construction. Where once it gets in the attic space or a wall, the exterior walls, when that fire breaks, and my house would be day. It's just straight up, and when something gets in there, it just goes through, and it super heats because it's got lath and plaster on it, it's not drywall, so, uh, the heat is just contained, and it was moving very rapidly, and it was very hot.
And I understand one of them is in the hospital, or?
Uh, they actually released a news at home, they said, today, um, their votes, a couple of them are not willing to be in the limelight, they're just like, we're gonna blow the attitude, you know, so. But, uh, my vote for heroes, that could add. Sure, lucky that they were able to get out the back exit, because they could not turn around and go back the way they can. That fire spread that quickly from the time that, uh, it hit that front porch, it went into the house. So, very, very lucky.
Mm-hmm.
Very appreciative of the job that they did.
Yeah.
Um, since the last council meeting, we've responded to seventy calls for service, um, medical, as fires, asthma, and everything else you can think of, I don't have your, uh, sheets, I'm busy last.
That's okay.
Um, the other thing that I have on the agenda is ultimate free, I can't, I've, I've had it out there, nobody's put any bids on it.
Oh, no.
So, um, the only thing I can think of is, we lowered the minimum bid, was it thirty? I said, we take the minimum bid off and try to see if we can get somebody to fill it up that way. Or take it to Hughes, and see if we can get something to auctioned off down there. Um, I've had discussions with the original builder of the truck, they didn't even wanna buy it back. And several others did not, because that builder built the truck, so. Guess what happened, we tried to save a few bucks, we buy a cheaper end, so.
Yeah. What year is it?
Thousand miles on it.
How many?
Uh, it's a twenty thirteen, and it's got a hundred and seventy-nine thousand miles on it. So I'm just looking for your recommendation on where to go with.
Well, if you took the minimum bid off, but we would, maybe a caveat, we have the right to refuse.
Yeah, that's on the sheet.
It's already on there?
Yep, and we.
That might be an option, and then the council's okay with that. Council?
Yeah, what's you gonna do?
Yeah, or do you need an ambulance? It's got a power cot in it. Great, take the blade, you can see from the back of it.
A mobile camper.
I can't afford that, though, Matt. I can't beat the minimum bid, sorry.
So we remove the minimum, uh, minimum bid and keep on there, the, the city has the right to refuse any and all bids.
Yeah, maybe try it again.
Are you guys good with that?
Yeah.
If you're all over that, let them go.
I mean, what's reasonable?
I've seen ambulances with two hundred thousand miles going for fifty or sixty thousand dollars, but we've got the brand that nobody wants.
But it is.
Quality brand. Yeah, and that's, that's, I just, when you buy.
So Matt, I'm just, like, if you had to take it off, what, how low?
I, I, I would not like to go below twenty, but
That's what I was thinking.
Afraid it's probably gonna happen. Or otherwise, we're just gonna keep holding on to it, I, I said, it's just one of those things, if some variable.
It works, though, right now, right?
Yeah, it works.
Driveable?
Yep, it's drivable, the power cot works in it, so I mean, it's operational. So, I, I'd like to say I have.
Have we put it on the Legis Cities?
I don't know if that was.
We need to see if that's on there.
Okay.
I'll be in tomorrow for our meeting, so let's talk tomorrow. Because they have a marketplace on there, and we'll just.
Minimum bid off of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll hope to get it on there.
Okay.
Okay.
That worked.
That might be one option.